I call the Halsey City Council Meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five to order at seven P. M. Your Honor, would you please call the roll?
Indeed. Counselor Pro-
Here.
Counselor Voias?
Here.
Counselor Isom?
Here.
Mayor Launtra?
Here.
Counselor Strauss?
Here.
Counselor Miller?
Here.
Counselor DeCoss?
Here.
Please rise-
I'll say something out, we'll explain it to you.
Okay. Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everybody who took time to attend tonight. This was Bush in this rain. Any guests who are physically present need to fill out the meeting sign and the sheet near the door. We may or may not be running a hybrid meeting tonight to continue to allow those who want to attend to hope to do so. To cut down background noise and feedback, remote attendees should meet themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmeet themselves to give reports to counsel. Audience members may meet themselves to speak during the public hearings and during citizen comments. Next item on the agenda is to approve council minutes from August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve the August city council meeting minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the financial report for August two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
Someone that I just handed out it. I realized that the L. G. I. P. bank reconciliation had a printing error.
Okay.
Um, I updated the online packet, and so that just replaces the bank report for the L. G. I. P. that you received in your credit packet.
Okay.
It was essentially blank, so that has actual-
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, entertain a motion.
I vote that the governing body of the city of Halsey approves it. August two thousand and twenty-five financial reports from the general can't resist.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any agenda adjustments this evening?
We, um, we do not have any agenda adjustments.
So the next item on the agenda is delegations, and we have the Lynn County Sheriff's Office.
Deputy Janice Sibley with the Lynn County Sheriff's Office will be sharing the August report. For August, there was three traffic citations, two traffic warnings, and two arrests made in Halsey. There's a total of forty-two called within the city limits. There is a missing persons report filed that the person was located by Tillowah County, I believe. Benjamin Parker of Alaska was issued a citation for driving while suspended in the influence of intoxicants. Andrew Parker of Halsey was arrested for stalking and trespass, too, who was lodged at the Lynn County Jail. He had several calls throughout the month, including trespassing, stalking, and mental health calls within the city limits. There was one sixteen-year-old who was issued a citation for violation of posted speed limit. One person was contacted at this park on O Street, where I'm parking.
Recording in progress.
After hours, they were informed of the park hours and moved along. There was a fraud call from sheriff's office involving vacuum sales. The sheriff's office and city hall was notified of it, and the city hall posted a community notification on Facebook.
Okay.
There was one stolen vehicle reported in Halsey. The suspect is known to the victim, and deputies are working on the case. And then one citation was issued for a certain ordinance violation. And finally, one vehicle was towed as abandoned within the Halsey city limits in August.
There was one I saw. That must have been when I was, you were looking at, the guy was found in Tillowah, Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah, that was one I wondered about.
Thanks for having that forward to me. In front of business.
What's that?
That forward, that was there for two weeks. Thank you for taking care of that.
Yeah, uh, he moved it on his own without any-
Oh, did he? Okay.
Oh, good.
Excellent.
I checked nearby box to make sure you just didn't move along, but it seems to be out of the area at the moment.
Yeah.
Good deal. Awesome. I want to say thank you for all your diligence in keeping track on speeders and other jackassery.
No, I grew up in a small town and didn't like how that deputy or anything, so I just kind of do the opposite of him. Try to get a positive influence on our community here.
I like it. Well done. Thank you.
Definitely appreciate it.
Yeah. And there is a, uh, a family that wants to try to find you and bring you cookies sometimes, so.
Well, you can eat the cookies for me if they don't find me.
Yeah.
Tell me how delicious they were. Because then I'll be jealous that they ate the whole plate.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thanks for your patrols outside of the school. A lot of parents and stuff that drop off and stuff have noticed that because whipping in front of the, like, convenience store, it's super apparent. So people do slow down a little bit through there right now.
Do you have anything you want to add for us?
No. Do you guys have anybody, like, I know Halsey kind of has a different method of sometimes people don't call the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
To city members or city hall. Do you guys have anything that you guys want me to focus on?
The only thing I have seen is, is people in the park currently.
Yeah.
And that's, other than that, it's nothing bad. People blowing through stop signs. Uh-huh. Yeah.
So I did speak to two individuals this week that were in the park while the construction workers were working, and they were getting permission from the contractors to be in the park. So I did talk to city hall about that.
Interesting.
Just to get everybody on the same page.
Okay.
Bill, Bill and Oliver have talked to the contractor. He said, "Don't do that."
Yeah, that's not helpful.
Yeah.
Cool. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You don't mind, I'd like to stay in the county.
Absolutely.
We're really excited.
You can go out in the rain if you want. We'll let you do that notice. So next item on the agenda is the pay street, proposed street vacation on West N Street. There is a communication in front of us asking to make sure they don't remove large trees from the property as part of the development.
Could this go to him also, Mr. Z?
I don't know if it did go to him also, or just-
It just came here.
Just him, yeah.
Is this something that will be shared with him or could be shared with him or should be? Or is it just that?
Yeah, I mean, this is public record. It's public comment. This is in relation to the public hearing.
Sure.
So we're technically holding a public hearing.
Yeah.
And we will not, they have to submit the letter, because some of you have done this already. They have to submit a letter requesting that we investigate, and then you guys approve that. Then we do a public hearing, and then they have to actually submit their formal application.
Okay.
Right.
Government. Um, and then we do like a formal staff report. And so this is actually just about the community for if anybody has any thoughts to share with the hearing, right?
Yeah.
Um, it won't be voted on until after the full staff report is done.
So. We'll just, uh, we'll start with calling the public hearing. Each citizen who speaks during a public hearing must limit their testimony to three minutes. Total time for public hearing capped at thirty minutes. If you are attending remotely and want to testify, please raise your hand in Zoom or state in the comments section that you wish to testify. Testimony we receive will be used by the council in an upcoming decision on the proposal. Audience demonstrations, personal attacks, and other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We, the council, are here to listen to testimony and come to the best decision possible. The matter of the street vacation will be voted on at the next city council meeting. Public hearing on the proposed street vacation on West N Street is called to order at seven ten September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. What's that? In summary, property owner of tax lots three thousand and three thousand and three hundred abutting both the north and south side of N Street right-of-way has submitted an application for street vacation. If the street is vacated, the city would no longer own the right-of-way. The land would be evenly divided between the properties abutting the north and south sides of the N Street right-of-way. Both owned by the applicant, there are no city utilities located in the right-of-way, and the master plans do not show a need to expand them there. The applicant would pay all costs for processing the vacation, including the cost for processing the application, which includes the staff, planning notices. And if the vacation is granted, the applicant will also pay for the cost of the surveyor, plat map, and potentially an attorney to draft the easement if one is granted. The applicant has already paid a thousand-dollar deposit. The city would no longer need to maintain the strip as that obligation will be transferred to the new owners. The application has stated, the applicant has stated that his purpose is to access all existing and future lots for potential future development. A public hearing is required for the council to consider a street vacation application. Does any member of the council wish to announce any actual or potential conflict of interest as defined by Oregon revised statute, section two four four? Hearing none, seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to make any challenge to any council members' impartiality or ability to participate in this decision? Hearing none and seeing none, have we received any written correspondence on this matter, which we have?
Um, yes, I will read it for the record.
Okay.
Um, we have received a correspondence from Heather Ryan, Kurt Finnegan of Halsey, and their comment is, "We have no opinion what way or the other on the vacation of West N Street. However, we beg of you, do not remove the large trees from the property as part of the development. As you're no doubt aware, multiple large magnificent trees on this property provide purchase and homes for untold numbers of birds and insects. It may be cheaper and easier to cut them all down rather than building around them, but please, please do the right thing. You'll leave them intact and protected."
We're now at a point in the hearing where council will hear any testimony. Anybody online want to?
I don't think you're online, would I?
Nobody's online? Okay. Anybody present? Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions regarding clarification of any testimony to this point? Hearing none, seeing none. If there are no further questions, I will close the public hearings on the proposed vacation of West N Street. The hearing is closed at seven thirteen. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is a time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any items of concern. Please limit your comments to about three minutes. Please start by introducing yourself and stating your address.
My name is Russell Simonson, and my only concerns are, should the council grant the removal of the, the ground there? Does the city get anything for it? And should the lots be subdivided? How big will it be?
Say that one last part again?
Should the lots be subdivided? How big will it be?
Well, the easement, well, you have, you have the measurements on that?
Um, all our street right-of-ways are sixty feet wide by the city block.
Right. So those would be split evenly between the two lots currently?
It's all my concerns.
Okay. And if you have questions about just like general building code and the kinds of things that can happen on a lot, because some of it is like a planner puts in a plan. We don't have that yet on this particular property. And then it goes from there. And so we would have potentially planning commission meetings and other things that are public forums where you might hear about the project as it moves forward. But if you come to city hall, we can't tell you about a plan that's not really set yet, but we can give you some insight as to like how planning building is allowed to happen in Halsey, and that might give you some inclination of like the potential there.
Okay.
And you can, you're welcome in coming here if it's not good for you because you're working during the day or whatever the case may be, a phone call, we can schedule something.
Thank you.
And minimum lot size is six thousand square for a single family, single family. Just if that gives you an idea. Minimum lot size for a single family is six thousand square.
That's, that's minimum, right?
Yes.
That seems very small.
Yeah.
I'll give our contact information and touch base when we have time.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Next, the reports to council. We'll start with city administrator report.
Um, hello, it's Mipriana, the city administrator. Uh, so we've talked about this a little bit, but things are set at this point. We have some upcoming important dates. Council will study is scheduled for October fourth and is at city hall. You will receive surveys, and so we do it through new people, but we do also have some folks that have done this at least once before, maybe twice, maybe a few. Um, so you'll receive surveys. Dave Kenny, our facilitator and city contract planner, he will put those together, and I will get them out to people by the sixteenth, is the date that he gave me. Uh, pretty timeline sensitive, so you have one week to get it done. And you can give it to city hall, you can give it to the mayor. If you put them in the utility drop box, that's acceptable, we'll get them out of there. But I will be monitoring you to get them to me if you haven't by September thirty yet. It's really, it's really helpful. It helps him to sort of like get all of the materials ready so that we can do the planning. Um, the next thing, oh, again, and it's start time nine A. M. here at city hall. Uh, oh, get public meeting law training is set for October sixth. That is from six P. M. to eight thirty P. M. Um, and it's going to be for councilors and planning commissioner members. But the other thing that's happening as a result of that is we've opened that up to neighboring cities as a good training opportunity. So in addition to being a good opportunity to get training, there are other ways to get training if that time doesn't work for you, but it is also a really good opportunity to meet elected officials from other entities nearby. So tangent is definitely in, and I will, I've extended the offer to Harrisburg, but I have not gotten confirmation. So I'll probably talk to her again in Brownsville as well, kind of see where land stuff we can get and group it together. I think that would be pretty cool. Um, influence infiltration, um, as we've signed the contract with Branch Engineering, uh, and they have hit the ground running for design. And so they already, as soon as they have their contract in hand, they put in like the call for all these survey markings. Like, they're out here, they're already working, so, um, I'm, yeah, I'm excited to work with them. I think it's going to be interesting to sort of get a sense of how this organization works through an infrastructure project. We've, we've had experiences with other engineers, but I'm not saying good or bad. It's just seeing how people do things differently, because as we have so many infrastructure projects coming in the next five and ten years, um, it's good to know who we have the most compatible work style with. And also just having a lot of projects, sometimes you end up having an issue that you really like, but don't, we could not do that one more thing from you, we're cool, you know? So it's good to have a few people you like to work with. Uh, so they've already started that. I anticipate we will be on track, you know, if that's any inclination to how it's going to be working with them for the timeline that we're looking for, which is design in the winter to be ready for procurement in the, you know, mid-winter, January, February, because we want to be breaking ground in spring. That was insight that Andy from Public Works shared when we had our initial meetings with him, is that, because he's the guy, right? He said, "That is the time you want to do these projects, because obviously if you're trying to address influence infiltration of stormwater into your system, it's good to do it when it's wet."
Right, right.
Because then you can see the leaks. So, um, that is our, that is our target timeline for now. And, uh, the other thing that I have done is that project has a partially forgivable loan that council approved. The good news is that because we got that through biz organ and one of the state revolving funds is that until we actually start to draw on that money, we're not paying anything, right? It's not drawing interest, we're not paying anything. So it gives, gives cities time to do it right, but they also have a lot of requirements. We have to submit plans to them before we break ground. We have to get our procurement package approved by them. And so I've provided them an update with where we're at with engineering. We don't have to do as many steps for that. They're just like, cool, great to see things moving forward. Um, but for, once we are ready to actually start going to bid, there's some additional stuffs we have to do. We're going to be compliant with that funding source. And then again, that's the one that, um, is fifty percent forgivable for us. So it's a really big project, and we don't have to pay for all of it, which is always nice, or citizens still, really nice. Um, the well project, water department testing is moving forward. Um, I am reaching out to some well drillers that do that kind of work that we've worked with in the past, and we're going to have that scheduled for the October first deadline. I already had conversations with them just to find out how far out they schedule these kinds of things, so I know that I can call them this week and that we can get on the calendar. Um, I just wanted to be so sure that we were not chasing our tail, because I feel like we shouldn't have to be bunk tracking for this, frankly.
Correct, correct.
And the people who we work with, who are our experts, know that that's how I feel about it. And, um, and we're, I'm having those discussions with them.
Okay.
Because I, you know, you guys have worked with me for long enough. I will send an invoice for our wasted time. It's usually my strategy.
Yeah.
And we usually land somewhere that is an agreement that it's some costing to the city for something that really should not have happened, in my opinion. Um, but fortunately, this testing for the, the claim of beneficial use, any money is a bummer, but it is not wildly expensive. It's not something that we can't swing. So we're going to get it done. And the other thing that I found interesting that is that when we got the guy on our team, that's like all he does is these kind of water rights things. It's just like very well versed in them. It turns out that we don't have a pump test on ninety-eight that they want for this permit as well, so we are embedding that. Yes, so we are embedding that into this process to sort of do a two birds, one stone situation. We're going to do the ninety-eight pump test, and we're getting official use all of them go. And it will be a day of work out on site. Really, the pump test only needs to take place for a total of like four or five hours. Um, and our guys will be out there to help on site for that. So that will be happening again for October first. Um, gap funding, I've submitted everything that I need to from biz organ for identifying, you know, we've got some stuff on the line that is promising but not promised, right?
Right.
And so just having those conversations about the little bit that's left. I think that the city has been really, really fortunate in, um, you know, work that we've done since I've been here, but also that my predecessor did, and being successful in getting a grant funding for this project, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
Um, and now we're kind of just at the very end and looking at potentially taking on debt, which is always something that we want to avoid. And so I continue to always watch for loans and talk to people, but we're having these conversations as well, like biz organ, about some of their like low interest rates, um, loan program, programs through their state revolving funds. But one of the things that came forward in my most recent discussions with them is a connection with the Energy Trusted Organ, which is a nonprofit. And they look specifically at efficiencies in the system, in systems. And so they can kind of come in and do essentially like a study on projects that you're already launching. And then they say, "If we think that you can gain efficiencies by putting this pump in, then we provide the incentives for the cost of that pump." And so then you'll basically reduce your cost burden by implementing their recommendations, because then they pay for it. So that, we have a site visit scheduled for tomorrow, which is awesome. And we will be, um, I'm pretty sure it's actually next week. I think that's a typo. They're coming. We're doing a site visit. Yes.
Sure.
That's a typo. They're coming. We're doing a site visit. We're doing the, um, water treatment plant, but since they're going to be here, they're also, I talked a little bit about some of our stuff that has come out of the wastewater facility plan. So we're going to do a tour of all of our infrastructure while they're here.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
Hope it's interesting to hear a report of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that the group we talked to in Bend? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
Okay.
They do it for homes, too.
Yeah.
I believe that they do it for homes, too.
Yeah, they do. They, yeah, we're like an industrial, we're considered an industrial project for them. Um, or we would fit into that category, but yeah, they do residential, they do private citizen stuff. It's a really, really cool organization.
Yeah.
So. More to come on that. Um, the park project is obviously underway, and it's so exciting. Um, demolition is complete. I saw today that they have framed like the whole thing, and they've obviously started laying rock where their, the rock base. And so it's chivalry alone. I think that, you know, they always said that it was going to be like a month-long project, but it feels like they're flying, so.
I think so. I think it's been like a week to have that done.
The rain doesn't help.
Well, no, no. Today probably, it'll last a while.
I think it popped today, so, um, the, the thing that we are consistently strategizing about right now is especially we're concerned when that, when the white concrete goes in and that is secured in a way that keeps people out of it. Because we want to reduce the chance of intentional or unintentional damages to the path. And so trying to get some more stuff out there that's really going to block the sections of what until it's like cured enough. Um, because obviously people are having a really, really hard time staying out of the park during construction. It's, it's going to be an interesting month.
Do we know if they're doing it on a weekday or like on a Friday, right, going into the weekend?
So I have those conversations with them as we get forward. I did ask somebody on site late last week when they planned to pour, but because the foreman wasn't on site, he was like, yeah.
I'm just thinking if it could, if it's like a Friday and going to the weekend where everything, like you guys are closed down, you know? So then kind of free rain. You don't want it to be, but.
Try to limit the amount of pouring on Fridays or at least like pass man.
Right.
So that there's time while we're still there to kind of like let it set up without people trump.
Well, yeah, and if somebody's there and it gets recorded, then it could be like.
Yeah, and obviously when we hear about things or we see things, people are stopping. We're stopped for stopping, we're saying stuff.
Yeah.
I know I was out, you know, I go for walks in the evening sometimes. Yeah. So, and they just think I'm just some crazy lady, which is true, but still.
I've done a few drive-bys and finger wigs.
Um, planning structures and other equipment. So the net broke right before the barbecue, we all know. Uh, good news and bad news, it's under warranty. They immediately responded to my complaints that it was broken immediately. Um, and it's not a purposefully available. They are, they, they started to order for a car, but it is being made to order, and so it is literally going to take ten to twelve weeks to get here. Um, that's a bummer. The guys took the broken one off just because it's still safe to use without that side, but it is not safe to use when it's happening off. So it's off so that they can still, obviously the park's closed right now. But, so before the park was closed, kids could still use it safely. Uh, we kept the other piece, and we are figuring out how to repair it, because it, you know, it wouldn't hurt to have a backup just in case this happens again. We did hear from some community members that basically the night that it got installed, that there was like three, like, the person said they were full grown men, but possibly teenagers, uh, were on it. There was like four of them fully jumping as much as they could, so, you know.
People.
Uh, hopefully we get a lot of light on it when we have this issue again. We can go to one more. We have a five percent grant. I gave you guys a lot of updates on this. One of them we talked about was one that we thought was a five thousand dollar grant, but it turned out, it was heavily marketed that way. Yes, it was. It was heavily marketed that way. So we were going to go out for a safety fence, because the safety fence, when I got quotes, was like between five and six thousand for that whole stretch on O Street. Um, but because one- Um, but because once we dug into the actual grant process, we found out that five thousand was the entire bucket and they were splitting it across three runners. I was like, okay, so that's just a bit too much of a gap for us to stretch if we lock it to fifteen hundred dollars, right? So I instead pivoted and I wrote it to increase programming around the pollinator garden project that we've already got planned for the library, um, as something that we can do in the spring and like offer more fun things for, for our community members, for kids to come to learn about pollinator gardens and to like expand upon that to be able to like give people seeds and maybe plants and do some more educational opportunities. So we'll see what happens with that. Um, we also wrote the grant for the poor and place scrubber. Got some letters from folks on that, which was really great, some letters of support. And then we also wrote some grants for, um, next year's SRP, it's summer reading program. We have to write that grant every year. That, that is like a thousand dollars that always helps us launch the summer reading program for the next year, which is really great until we know how much money we can get from the fundraiser. It's really, really helpful. And then the other grant that's coming up for the library is this smaller supplies grant. Irene is the agency that like does the theme and has all the writing, marketing materials and like a lot of other stuff too that is for summer reading program. And so you can actually write a grant to get credits to use for buying stuff directly from their store. And that one is one that I'm going to have Caitlin take the lead on because she's, she's talked about being interested in grant writing and it's like a really good one to tie your feet. So like just get in, you know, a few hundred dollars. Um, so I think that that'll be a really good one for her to start out on. Lots of training also, and this is kind of, um, these things come in waves. And so I feel like fall and spring are like conference time. And so that's when everything is, so it feels like it's a lot right now. But some of the things that I think are big highlights are, um, Larissa is going to the Oregon Main Street Conference and I'm really excited about it. Yeah, it's local, it was low cost. You know, I always look at things that can like maximize the training opportunity, but also like save us the most money. So I, um, I've got a lot of scholarships for things in the last year. I'm like, I'm due. You know, so it's, you know, it's really gotten us, uh, a lot of money for training, which is really, really helpful because of unfortunately charged. Um, and so that's a really big one. And then the other things that I think are cool is Audrey's gonna do public records management training. And then we have a bunch of counselors that decided to do the municipal fundamentals. Um, two of them being new counselors. And so I think that's gonna be a really great opportunity. I'm excited you guys are gonna go do that. I think that's it for now. Any questions?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions about the Public Works Department report?
Nope.
Not all at once now, guys. How about library?
I think we're good.
I will add to the library because it wasn't in the report. Um, I was helping Caitlin with the new rotating art exhibit. So starting, I think she's planning on putting it up in October. The preschool and the kindergarteners, uh, Central Lynn are doing art installations for us. So I talked to their teachers and handed them out. Um, and they have until the end of the month, basically. And we just gave them free rein. Like tell us what, you know, whatever your class wants to tell us or about learning or a theme or something that you want to do. Um, and gave it pretty much complete open-endedness. So the teachers are gonna just take it what they want to do with their students and run. So that you have a little, like multiple small canvases so they can do different themes or different whatever through the month. And then those will be on display at the library.
Awesome. I love getting the school involved in it too.
Yeah, I think we're gonna mention it to the paper too and have them put it in. So parents know that they can come and see their kids artwork and stuff and sign up for a card. And we mentioned doing it maybe with, in the next section with like some of the older classes and trying to make it
Mm-hmm, that's awesome.
Through the school district for artworks for the year. But yeah, the three preschool, uh, the three-year-old preschool and the two pre-aid classes and both kindergarten classes will have artwork up.
Very cool. So next is old business. We're gonna look at abatement.
Mirror support?
I don't have a whole lot for last, but.
Perfect.
So, yeah. Usually it's pretty light, so.
That's quite all.
Yeah. Uh, next is code enforcement abatement. Issue is council's asked to provide guidance to staff regarding pursuit of abatement proceeding. Do you want to? Audrey, Brianna, who wants to?
Yeah, so we've talked about this a little bit in the last council meeting, I think the one before that as well. Um, the city has been working on a code enforcement case at a residence with accessible inoperable vehicles located on their property. Uh, we did discuss this ma, or last month and council requested that we issue another citation and do the research for the cost to abate that property. Um, Audrey, deal a lot of research. And she got us some quotes from some county companies about what it would take to abate that property. And we could, depending on if we wanted to do a partial versus a full abatement for ranging somewhere between like that thirty-three hundred to sixty-three hundred. Something to note there is that, um, they technically can have two inoperable vehicles. And so the partial abatement is probably more on par with what would be, you know, into compliance at that property. Um, things that constitute inoperable, um, are obviously things that are like broken down, growing grass under them. But like there are things like never been registered to the property, have super old tags, are literally broken down. Um, and that does not just apply to like cars. It's like broke down boats, broke down trailers, things like that. So those all constitute as like inoperable vehicle, um, under that armass. So essentially where we're at is we just want to know how far down the road you would like us to go in our pursuit of abatement proceedings if we continue to see non-compliance. At this time, we still have not seen any efforts towards compliance. We do have court again on the twenty-sixth with some new strategies to make sure the judge hears us.
Right.
Um, the other thing that council needs to know is that should we continue the pursuit of abatement, we do have to go through all our steps. We have to post the property. And those things have to happen like in conjunction with the judge's orders. So those things happen, like citations happen, we're going to court, we're posting the property, we're giving them the opportunity to appeal to council, like all those things have, all those time has to happen. Do, do you feel like I've got this right? Cause I'm good for this too. I'm just, I don't see you looking at me. And I'm like, Audrey and we've been working on this. It's like I, we're on the right track. Okay. Please correct me if I've missed something. Seriously.
Oh, she's got it.
Okay, so, um, so I think the thing that we want to know from council is, would you like us to continue in our pursuit, knowing the timeline that it takes to get it done? Um, would you like to revisit this after court again?
I'm of the mind that we do continue on, but look at more of the, the partial abatement. If nothing else, for sheer cost savings, um, if we can save half and make some progress. It, it also looks when we're, if we still have to go to court after that, we've tried to be more lenient. So. That, that's my view. So what do, what do you all think?
You think wait till after court or do something before court?
Well, we've already done the sighting.
Right.
So, and this court date's set, correct?
Mm-hmm. And I think this court date, what, what the potential is, is that the judge will say, why haven't you done anything? These are the citations that, this is what we hear from people who like when the county does this more often, like this is kind of new for, a lot of councils do a lot of this.
Right.
You know, and, and the judge might say, you're getting another two hundred dollar ticket and off you go. But sometimes what we, what other folks have said they see is that the judge might say, you have a lot of pending fines because the, the continuing fines can kick in. You're gonna get five hundred dollars every single day that you're out of compliance.
Correct.
Which at the, and then in thirty days you need to come back and show that you've made compliance. And then at that time, the judge may say, oh, it looks like you've done all the work. I'm gonna waive your fines. Or it looks like you've done all the work. I'm gonna only charge you court fees. And, and then just, you know, now you don't have to pay all these fines. Or you've done nothing. And now we're in a new set of circumstances. Um, I'm not the judge.
Right. I, I think that if, when that court date comes, if we, you know, go with it, the mind that they've done nothing and, and inform the judge that we do intend to proceed with a bait, a partial abatement instead of a full abatement. Um, that probably is a, a better tactic to go with. Um, and I, we do have to list the, the abated property, correct?
Yeah.
So, instead of say, here's the abated property, we're looking at instead of all of the abated properties. Trying to.
The, the best course of action in, for us would probably best give us the direction of that. Go ahead and list everything. Just list everything and then say, our intention is to take partial.
Right.
List it because if something changes down the road
Sure.
and we don't want to have to backdoor to red listing.
Okay.
We better have all listed. Then it, it goes into the court order that gives the sheriff the right to come and help us
Makes sense.
Do what we need to do.
Okay.
Question, when you say list it, what, what are you saying like public record wise? Or are you saying list it like for sale or listed in?
At the end of the process, what happens is, is it goes back to the judge because we started the, through the citation process. Goes back to the judge and we tell the judge, you know, progress has been made. The judge then makes the, the direction that the fines stay in place and there can be many ways of collecting that money. One of those is the abatement process and they give a court order stating that the property can be abated. And that's the, the, the order that gives us the oomph to go do what we do.
Okay.
Um, to, to do the abatement process. So if you don't, if you don't listen to them, you can't take it. So better to list it all and then not take it.
She's a stupid cop.
Yeah.
And she works civil, so that makes a lot more sense for me.
Right, yeah.
So the daily fines is up to the judge to make that?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's listed in our, you know, school code. But we partner obviously with the county to actually take it, our, our stuff. So when we are, until they kind of go before the court, we don't generally try to do the daily accruing fines, just be a ticket.
Right.
That's usually excited for.
Is there multiple properties?
So this is the one that, the, this is one that we have had, the city, not just since I've been here, has had an ongoing effort at trying to get them in compliance. The broken down vehicles is one portion of the issue. Something that's not even been discussed or addressed in this that I, I wouldn't take to abatement frankly because they haven't received as many letters in the last two years about it. It's like just kind of a problem property all around.
Right.
Um, there are, off the top of my head, there are at least two other properties that probably fall into this category, but that are less severe. Um, which is also why, you know, in, in past meetings I've said, I think that it's important that we talk about this in our goal setting to decide where is the city at in this, how much, because it's budgetary, right? Like do we want to spend a lot of stock time and franking money on this kind of effort? Um, is this something that the council feels is a goal in the next, in the coming couple of years to try to get some of these properties that are, have a history of being pretty major problems under control?
Isn't this particular one, did you say it was like over five years?
Yes.
Started in two thousand eighteen.
Yep.
Yeah.
I know it's.
At this point, it's probably.
Some of the situation has been much longer than, than that though.
Wow.
I've been here for.
Since I've been here.
I've been here for thirty-some years.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah. So, a, and we've tried letters, we've tried, you know, and one of the reasons why this one ended up being higher on our radar is because for the inoperable vehicle vehicles, they get, they'd start moving into the streets, into the rightways. And then they'd be left there for weeks and weeks and months and months. And then they get a letter, hey, you can't do that. But like also you can't just put them in your property because you have six other things in, in your front yard. So you were already like out of compliance there, you can't move it. And then they would just move them back into their yard. And so in that, and in the junk and everything, they've ended up kind of rising to the surface. And, and there are a couple of other places in town that, um, are, are out of compliance in the same way, that have a lot of broken down cars. Um, that happen to not be surrounded by as much junk, but are still not compliant.
Right.
But they've received letters as well, right?
Um, specifically when they are, um, when we have like them spilling out into the rightways and stuff, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I think by pursuing, pursuing this one in particular, it might send a message that one.
We're gonna keep this one seriously.
Yeah.
It's something that we've.
It's sort of just the continuous, you know.
Something Halsey is not for many, 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 many years, code enforcement has not been applied. But now we're trying to kind of bring it back and stay on top of it to take care of the community.
Well, and the thing is, is that we do try, there, people have ideas about what's a nice yard and what's not a nice yard and all of those things, right? I'm not applying that scrutiny. It's more like, no, you have a lot of blackberries growing over the top. So this, that and this, like, you know, it's, it's like, you know, it's gonna be like bad for it to rise to the top of our list. And we have probably other properties that get lots of, they get letters from us every year and sometimes two or three. Um, for a variety of reasons. But we do try to not like, you know, when we know somebody's really, 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 really elderly and their dandelions are too tall.
Right.
You know, it's not like we're counting down every person's store. We really try to be working with people and like not coming down hard. But when you have a property that you're dealing with year over year and that you're not seeing improvement, it's like at some point it has, it feels like it, it should escalate.
So we could approve continued pursuit of the abatement? We could table the request? We could deny the request to continue pursuit of abatement or provide other direction? What is your opinion, your consensus?
Knowing the history, I wouldn't have a problem with going ahead with it.
So?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's continuous years of no, no compliance, no care.
So I'm hearing consensus, I'm hearing consensus to approve continued pursuit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and as this goes on, like there has to be a follow-up statement as we go. You'll see this again if we get to that point.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda, October council meeting, schedule change? Yes, no, maybe so?
Yes, maybe so.
Um, we talked about this a little bit, um, in the past month, but we have several things scheduled for October. Um, and so I just wanted to find out if council wanted to just hold like a potential date in case anything pressing comes up for like a special meeting, like a short special meeting or cancel period or reschedule for a regular meeting because I am not able to be here for a length of time.
So.
So we usually hold the, what is it, the fourth Tuesday of the month?
Yeah.
Open for a potential second if needed.
Right. So that would be.
If we skip the fourteenth and like you said, just kind of, I mean, the, the, the fourth Tuesday of the month is always kind of reserved for a, if we need to have a second meeting. That's my thought on this.
That puts it, that puts it at the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Because we do have quite a few like back-to-back things here. I don't know. It's just my thought.
I think that's probably the best course of action since we have so much going on. Is the twenty-eighth good for everybody?
Potentially.
Essentially, yeah.
Is that just if needed or?
That's just if needed. We're not definitely gonna have a meeting. We'll just use it if we have, um, anything pressing that really needs council attention.
Right. Save that date.
But we have to know a few days or ahead of time, right?
Yes.
Because we have to post it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right? Yeah.
If we're gonna do it, we will know by the twenty-first.
Right.
By a week ahead.
Let me change that in my calendar. Okay. And with that, there are no ordinances and resolutions, so we will adjourn at seven fifty.
Wow.